All right, let's get going. So we're on item 18, but I want to make sure it was on the consent agenda. But I want to see, is anybody here on item 18 in opposition? Let me say that one more time. Anybody, was there anyone here? Is there anybody here for item 18 in opposition? I'll make sure we get.
What do you find?
It's, item 18 is to connect Nashville. All right, so seeing no opposition, we can put it back on the consent agenda if the commissioners, if they're seeing no objection, we'll put it. Let's go ahead and take a vote, just in case.
Yes.
Oh, hold on. Let's wait. Hold on. Let's make sure. We don't want to, we're very transparent here.
Connect is at 19th and Division Street.
Well, let's have somebody talk to him for a second. All right, let's do, let's do.
All right, the next item on the agenda is item 18. This is a request for a specific plan to permit a mixed-use development on property totaling 1.19 acres at the intersection of 19th Avenue South and Division Street in Midtown. The subject properties are outlined in red. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The current zoning on the property is split on this site. The northern portion of the site is zoned Core Frame, which is intended for commercial service support uses for the central business district. The southern portion of the site is currently zoned Office Residential Intensive Alternative, which is intended for high-intensity office or multifamily residential uses and is intended to create walkable neighborhoods. This is the site, it's outlined in red, which is a little difficult to see on the growth and preservation map from the Nashville Next Plan. The orange indicates a Tier 1 center. So this is in a Tier 1 center within that plan. And the policy on the site reflects that Tier 1 center. It is designated T-5 Center Mixed-Use Neighborhood. These policy areas are intended to be among the most intense areas of the county with a significant amount of vertical mixed-use development, including high-intensity residential, commercial, institutional, and office uses, served by high levels of connectivity. This SP proposes 420 multifamily residential units and restaurant uses in a building with high lot coverage, shallow setbacks, and that is oriented to the street, all of which is consistent with the T-5 mixed-use policy. This portion of Midtown is also within a supplemental policy in the Midtown Study, which is part of the Green Hills Midtown Community Plan that applies in this area. The supplemental policy contains specific guidance for properties that are within an area bounded by several alleys. And you can see a yellow dashed line on the map. That indicates the boundary of that supplemental policy area. So it's everything inside that yellow line. The policy, the supplemental policy guidance calls for lower building heights and masses than you might see along the West End or Broadway corridors in order to transition to historic lower-intensity areas to the east such as Music Row. It also discusses the maximum heights that are appropriate in this area and calls for heights of up to 20 stories. But for heights above eight stories, improvements above and beyond the Major and Collector's Street Plan standards for vehicular and pedestrian infrastructure would be expected, given the constrained infrastructure in this area. This is the plan for the site. You're actually looking at the first-floor floor plan rather than a typical site plan because it's a little easier to see what's going on within the building. There are 24,000 square feet of restaurant use on the first floor. That includes both a traditional full-service restaurant as well as a food hall concept. So there would be multiple vendors or stalls in the space with a central seating area. And you can see that that's located in this portion of the building. Above that, there would be structured parking and then 420 multifamily residential units. The pedestrian access for the building will be from 19th Avenue South into the commercial spaces. And there are also outdoor dining areas and plazas along that frontage to activate the street. The amenities for the residential units will be used to align the structured parking so that it is screened from the public spaces and the street. And then vehicular access to the site will be through a single entrance drive on 19th Avenue South with loading and service provided from the alley. There are sidewalks consistent with the Major and Collector's Street Plan standards along Division Street and within, consistent with guidance in the Midtown Study for sidewalks adjacent to the scale of building along 19th Avenue South. This is a massing diagram, conceptual massing diagram for the proposal. The specific plan does include standards for glazing and facade treatments, and staff has also recommended some conditions to make sure that all of that transitions appropriately and addresses the surrounding developments. The height proposed is 20 stories. And consistent with the guidance in the supplemental policy for buildings that exceed eight stories in height, there are some proposals that go above and beyond the Major and Collector's Street Plan requirements for just the sidewalks in this area. This plan includes identified locations for bicycle-sharing stations. It also includes 304 bicycle parking spaces, where 58 would be required by code. The majority of those, there are publicly available spaces on the plaza, and then there are a significant number of indoor bike storage spaces for residents of this building. There are also conditions for the applicant to install signage and pavement markings to identify a network of bicycle boulevards in this area, as well as encouraging the use of transit through subsidizing transit passes if feasible. And the transit stop is 270 feet away on Broadway from here. So again, all of those are aimed at encouraging more active forms of transportation. This is in Midtown, close to jobs and services, and hopefully people could make use of those rather than vehicles through this proposed. The uses in the building, as well as the massing orientation and placement of the structure, are consistent with the T-5 mixed-use policy and with the surrounding development. The proximity of the site to transit, jobs, and services in the Midtown area makes this an appropriate location for additional intensity. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
Thank you. We'll open this item for public hearing. The applicant will have 10 minutes, and you can reserve two of the 10 for rebuttal if need. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I am David Earnhardt. I represent Akara Partners LLC. We are located at 640 North LaSalle Street in Chicago, Illinois. We are the primary sponsors of the SP applicant, 1815 Division Street LLC. As a firm, we focus particularly on dense urban infill and transit-oriented properties, and we primarily develop multifamily apartment buildings and hotels. In 2016, we actually completed our first Connect project, which is in our home market of Chicago. So we're excited about this. It's actually our second version of Connect here at 1815 Division Street. Beyond complying with the guidelines set forth in the Nashville Nash, the Nashville Next Plan, excuse me, we believe that the proposed project aligns with the spirit and intent of the plan, as well as to the letter of the law, or the guidelines, I should say. The project includes, as we mentioned, 420 apartment units, 445 parking spaces, significant provisions for bicycle parking. To accommodate the challenges that we often see created by increased density and intensity of use, we worked with National Planning and Public Works Department to really reinforce the energy of the Midtown neighborhood, to create an appropriate building massing and to provide adequate infrastructure surrounding the streets. To sort of briefly summarize the highlights, as Ms. Shepherd pointed out, as urban developers, we understand the value of vibrant street life. We know what that means. We know what it means to the city and to a city's residents. So to that end, the proposed project includes, as she mentioned, nearly 24,000 square feet of street-level retail, currently under negotiations with a chef-driven restaurant group, as well as a separate food hall group. So those will be two distinct tenants. We've also provided approximately 19 feet of clear sidewalk along 19th Avenue South, which will allow for both public bicycle parking as well as outdoor dining, something that's very near and dear to us in Chicago, since we don't get to do it very often. The sidewalk will culminate, actually, in a wider entry plaza at the intersection of Division and 19th Avenue South. So at 20 stories, the building has been designed, it's a classic podium and tower. We have retail and parking uses in the base, 13 stories of residences above there. The way the tower sets back is important to us because what it does is it really helps to alleviate the bulk of the tower. We have these sort of two overlapping bars, which give us two thinner structures, and we think that helps to provide visual relief at the street level as well. As an architect, I can tell you that's important to me. The amenities will be located at floors 2 through 4, so someone walking along the street will notice not a parking garage, but they will notice active and vibrant spaces that are attached to our building. It will be an active street presence, hopefully, for the entire building. Additionally, we will screen the parking along 19th Avenue South and Division Street to, again, to obscure the parking. So as far as public works, we've maintained two lanes of traffic with drive aisles at, with parking aisles, I should say, at 19th Avenue South, and we further agreed to increase the width of the alley between 18th and 19th Avenue South by five feet. Finally, I should add that we will comply with the current agreement, the current requirements for both affordable or workforce, for affordable or workforce housing, and we've already engaged the Mayor's Office of Housing for enrollment in the Housing Incentive Pilot Program to provide workforce housing at below-market rents. I do request to reserve my remaining time. Thank you for your attention, too, and your consideration of this proposed project.
Thank you, sir. Two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone wishing to speak in support of the project? Seeing anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up, sir. You have two minutes. And state your name and your address, please.
My name is Dane Bryant. My address is, can you use a P.O. box? P.O. Box 128078, 19th Avenue South, Nashville. My, my, I heard at the end of this that the alley was going to go increase by five feet. That's increasing on my property, because my property is on the alley. And I really don't want anybody increasing the size of the alley and taking away my property. Does that make sense?
The only expansion of the alley would be on the side of the development.
We're in good shape.[840.12][840.12](Laughter).
Good job.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? You don't need, y'all need a rebuttal. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, we'll close the public hearing. And how about, you want to start with Vice Chair? Vice Chair, why don't you start us off?
This might be for my friend Carrie. Condition nine, which says that, I think it was nine, that would affect the provision of affordable and workforce housing. So what's the status of that? And will this project be subject to that requirement?
That is a standard condition that we're putting on all rezonings that increase residential entitlements. Whether the project actually participates in the program, it has a number of different factors at the time they get the building permit. The first is whether it ends up being rentals or for-sale product.
Okay.
And so it would only apply if it does get built and then rented. And then also, it only applies if there are financial incentives available through the Mayor's Office at the time of the permit.
So maybe this is a question for the applicant about whether or not this is going to be for sale or rental?
Our intentions that it will be rental property only.
Okay. Okay. And so what is our status at this point? We don't have the financial incentives current, they are currently available, is that correct?
Yes, there are financial incentives available, but it's being triggered at the time of permitting.
Okay.
So they would have to go through the final site plan process, do engineering and architectural documents, actually construct the building to be able to provide the units, and that's the point at which they would work with the Mayor's Office between the building permit being issued and actually building the building so that they're not committing money too early in the process.
Okay. So I guess another question for the applicant is, assuming that the financial incentives are available, is this a project that you would intend to participate in? Our program?
Yes, we, in fact, I, even earlier today, I was at the Mayor's Office, meeting with representatives from the Office of Housing, so.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So we might see upwards of 40 units of affordable workforce housing here, if I remember what it said. Okay. Good. That was my only question. I mean, I drive the street every day. I'm somewhat dreading having 19th or Division closed again. It's been closed the better part of the last five years, from what I can tell, but I guess this is where we want to concentrate our density, so I'm in support.
I do have to say, I'm in support. And especially, I was involved in the demolition of the building that was there before, and it was going to be, talked about a parking lot, so I'm glad to see this development going there. And in support of staff recommendations, if you don't, I could make a motion if you want to.
Well, let's see if any, any other discussion? Any other?
I have one quick question. The property just to the south of that, that's an SP, is it a similar scale and size as this?
It is. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me. I could get them, but I believe it's 18 stories. So they're, they're very similar in terms of the lot coverage and setbacks and heights.
And it's under construction right now?
It is, yes, sir.
All right, we'll try it again. Any other discussion? Commissioner Sims?
I just want to follow up on the question. How do we ensure, what's the mechanism for ensuring that these 40 approximate units are actually available when it's built?
Sure. Anything that's going through the rezoning process now, we are tracking in GIS so that when Code opens up a permit application, they can see that they should track the Mayor's Office, Director of Housing, on that permit. And so she will actually have a sign-off, that the applicants will have to go speak to her about whether there are any funds available. If there are funds available, she would work with them between the building permit issuance and the issuance of the use and occupancy permit to take the financial incentives grant agreement through council so that that can be done before use and occupancy permits are issued.
And then, once he takes, the owner occupies, what, what mechanism does the city have to ensure that those 40 stay affordable?
In the rental context, there is a third-party administrator for the program who's helping train developers on how to do the income qualifications for the renters, as well as do some reporting mechanisms throughout the year, and then the payment for the financial incentives monthly.
All right, let's try it again. Any other discussion? I want to make sure. It's time for a motion.
Can I say something?
Yeah, Councilman, of course you can.
I am so happy (laugh) because you guys saw me here when I was advocating for that legislation, and now one of my first votes gets to be to support a project like this. So I'm very, I'm very happy, very thankful for your commitment. And obviously, the Achilles' heel of this is funding, and at the council, I'm going to continue pushing for more funding for the Barnes Fund because we want to partner with more developers interested in doing what we need in Nashville badly, which is to increase affordability and workforce housing. So, but, thank you. I just want to say that. I'm very excited. I'm bursting at the seams, so this is great. Thank you.
All right, we need a motion. Mr. Tibbs, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, to approve staff recommendation.
Approve staff recommendations. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. And item 18 is adopted.
All right, item 24 is a request to rezone approximately 1.07 acres from single-family residential to multifamily residential alternative zoning for properties at 627, 629, and 631 East Trinity Lane. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. The site is located at the northwest corner of East Trinity Lane and Oakwood Avenue, west of Ellington Parkway. The parcels contain residential structures that front East Trinity Lane. RS 7.5 requires a minimum 7,500 square foot lot and is intended for single-family dwellings. RM 20A is intended for single-family duplex and multifamily dwellings and is designed to create walkable neighborhoods through the use of appropriate building placement and bulk standards. The proposed zone change is consistent with T-4 urban residential corridor policy, which is intended to enhance urban residential corridors by providing high levels of connectivity. The surrounding area includes a mixture of land use policy. The site is on the eastern edge of T-4 residential corridor policy here, adjacent to T-4 Neighborhood Center policy here, and across the street from additional parcels in the T-4 residential corridor policy across the street. There is neighborhood maintenance policy located to the north, and there's also a large area of district employment policy located on the same side of the street, approximately 250 feet east of the site. The existing land use pattern along the block contains a mixture of residential, institutional, and low-intensity commercial uses west of the site, and then higher-intensity commercial and industrial uses east of the site. The Nashville Next Growth and Conservation Map identifies East Trinity Lane as a high-capacity transit corridor. So these thick blue lines on Gallatin and on Dickerson Pike indicate immediate-need priority corridors. And then East Trinity Lane, shown with the thinner blue line, indicates a long-term need transit corridor. So the site is located in the middle of two immediate-need corridors and approximately 250 feet from a Tier 2 center located in this, this orange color, along East Trinity Lane. This is a zoomed-out version of the Growth and Preservation Concept Plan, showing the proximity of the site to downtown. Downtown is a Tier 1 center, and it's about four miles from downtown. Multifamily residential development at the site will provide an added mixture of housing types in proximity to higher-density development, and the surrounding street network allows for improved pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular connectivity. Landscape buffers will also be required along the northern and western property lines adjacent to the RS-zoned properties. As RM 20A is consistent with the T-4 residential corridor policy and with the surrounding context, staff recommends approval with conditions.
Thank you. We'll open this item for public hearing. The applicant has 10 minutes. Is the applicant in the room?
Counselor.
Oh, the Councilman's the applicant. And the Councilman, he already talked about this particular project earlier, if you remember. Did he not talk about 24? Is there anyone in opposition? Or is there anyone in, let me, excuse, I'm sorry. How is, is anyone here in support? Anyone in opposition? Come on up. You still have to say your name and address. Still have to say your. Even though we all know it. You.
It's unfortunate that you know me. Did you change your hair?
You changed your hair.
I did change my hair.
I see.
We're noticed, we're, we notice. Welcome.
Well, there's new people here, so my name is Ashanti Davis. I live at 321 Edwin Street in 37207. Recently, because I live in District 5, a lot of change has gone on in this particular area. I live, East Trinity Lane is my backyard, so I'm about three blocks from here, four blocks from here. Honestly, it's sort of weird to speak without the applicant being here because I don't really know the justification for the upzoning. There's a lot of upzoning going on this area, and I just ask this body to think about the aggregate impact of all of this. Right across the street from this particular proposed spot, 191 units were approved a few months back, and then right behind that 191 units, there's 50 units proposed, and behind that, there's another 20 proposed. So there's a lot going on, and I understand that Trinity is considered a corridor, but in its current state, it's pretty much a two-lane highway, one way in and one way out. And this is an intersection where people drive in and out. There's a lot of near wrecks because some people are trying to go this way to Ellington, and some people are coming off Ellington. And there's a traffic light at Ellington now, but there's not really any traffic lights in between this whole stretch until you get down to Jones. And so right now, infrastructure is sort of an issue for this area, and with all of the added density coming in, I think my neighbors are becoming more concerned. A lot of the items that my neighbors are going to show up for tonight have been deferred, but I think people are concerned about the growing density and the negative impact that might leap from that density. And so I just ask that, when you guys vote, to think about that. That's it. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And how about Commissioner Hagan, do you want to go first?
Yeah. Well, now that we have opposition, and that's a good point, I think, do we have, can we look out and see what else is, I mean, has gone, you know, across the street? So across the street is the East Trinity Lane. Have we approved something? We approved, we went through so many things.
So I think it would help if I zoomed out a little bit.
I mean, I think the one piece would be that makes it consistent with what's going on in that area. And it's with, within policy.
Let me scroll down. So this is a map that just shows, the dots indicate applications for rezoning that have been approved within the last year, and this is a half-mile radius. So here's the site here. Across the street, the East Trinity Lane SP, which you all may remember, was approved a few months ago, and I have.
And that, and that makes sense. I mean, if East Trinity Lane, like she said, it's long-term. You called it a long-term.
Right. So it's located between two short-term, like immediate-need corridors. And you'll kind of notice that the concentration of these closer to, to the Ellington Parkway. But yeah, this is an SP with 190 multifamily units, and then right next to it was 32 units, I believe. These were straight zone changes. This one down here, and I'm going to make sure I check before I, so this one was an RM 20A zoning that involved a few properties, and it was IWD before. And then the one down here was RS 5 to R 6A. And then across the street, you had another SP with some multifamily units, and I can double-check on those numbers, but.
Well, I live to the, up to the left, northwest of this, and I take Ellington a lot, and we take Trinity for a host of reasons. And it's proximity to Ellington and on it, on Trinity makes sense to me for this, more than it would if it were two blocks another direction from Trinity. We do have to deal with the Trinity two-lane congestion, and does this, would this involve sidewalks?
So sidewalks would be determined. So, sidewalks would be determined-- it likely would because East Trinity Lane is on the Major and Collector Street--
That's what I'm thinking.
But, it would be triggered with-- at the permit level. This-- so, this East Trinity Lane SP down here, one of the conditions of approval was that they do roadway improvements to install sidewalks and a planning strip, and then, also that they align the access into the development with Oakwood Avenue. You can see that this whole area is kind of a grid network where it makes sense to support additional residential density because there are multiple ways to disperse the traffic.
Mm-hmm. And I do think we really have to put in the sidewalks, especially with our now our metro movement towards CME that we have going on. The sidewalks are extremely important.
Well, one way to move up in the priority list is to have the higher density in the area.
Which this will have as we continue.
Okay.
I'm good.
Commissioner Cottle?
Another quick question. Right now, it's zoned for four units, right? It could be used for four units. Am I reading that's right? On the right project? But it could-- but would go to six?
Six, maximum.
So, the maximum density we're gonna have is six? No? Oh, 21. Oh, I'm sorry.
Zoned for six.
Okay, zoned for six now, so maximum would be 21.
21, right.
Okay. That's-- I misread that. Sorry. I mean, you know, it kind of makes sense. Long Trinity Lane, close to Ellington Parkway. You know, we gotta have the growth. That's probably not a bad place.
Commissioner Moore?
So, since I'm new, which it makes sense to me, but just to her point of all of the proposals, I guess, that have been approved for that area, I guess, could I just have some explanation to the thought behind that appropriate question?
Sure. Actually, probably the quickest explanation is going to be from the policy because the policy is what guides in our ability to approve or disapprove a rezoning. And going to venture to guess, well, I'll let somebody from the-- Lee, you want to stand up and speak to the policy in this area before I hack it up?
T4 residential corridor is a step up from, if you remember the Green Hills conversation that we were having with the T3 residential corridor, where we had the five-story building on the corner, and then, the townhouses and the flats going down that corridor. So, this is a step up from that. So, townhouses are typically nine to 20 units per acre. For this piece of property, for T4 residential corridor, at 20 units per acre, you're right in the ballpark from a policy standpoint of what's envisioned in the future. So, small stacked flats, townhouses, that's what's envisioned by this policy. And this policy, going back to the community plan before Nashville Next, this is RM policy. It's a medium density up to nine units per acre, but it's a special policy because it's kind of in-between industrial zoning and the residential neighborhood. So, the special policy said you might have densities in excess of nine units per acre, even dating back 15 years or so. So, then, Nashville Next comes in, and it was updated recently, just a year ago, for multiple neighborhoods in this area to-- I don't think this particular property was, but to go from maintenance to evolving on a lot of the properties in these neighborhoods here. So, the T4 residential corridor is appropriate along East Trinity Lane.
And so, how is traffic flow considered in that when you have so much growth in the area?
Yeah. Well, there's the Major and Collector Street Plan that's factored into that. So, as growth occurs, there are upgrades that, as Commissioner Higgindeere asked about the sidewalk improvements, there may be right-of-way dedications. So, even if growth occurs incrementally, there are still requirements that are placed on developments as they occur to accommodate the Major and Collector Street Plan. It looks at the future right-of-way of these streets.
Thank you.
Sure.
That's a good question.
Councilman?
Yeah. And the council, when the applicant is not there with the further legislation, is that something we do here in the commission?
We don't have the same rules as the council. So, no, not always.
It's rare.
It's rare because a lot of times, the council members are not here and are the applicant for one reason or another. So--
How do we get answers to the questions that we just had about the sidewalk, about the, I mean, affordable housing may be included, but we don't know because we don't know what type of--
Well, the most of the questions that have arisen so far would come up during, when they go to get their building permits. And so, they're going to look at it. They're gonna see that it's on, in the Major and Collector Street Plan, and that it's gonna be required that they install the sidewalks. I don't know how they could develop here and get around that. They could leave it as it is, but if they go to develop it to use these new entitlements that they have, they're gonna have to build sidewalks. As far as the affordable housing piece, there's no way to know that until, once again, they go to get the really-- well, when they bring the plan in and assuming that they're leaving it as it is, not coming in to subdivide the property in any way, that's what they'd have to do if they were gonna do ownership. If they're gonna leave it as ownership, they would do it that way. But if they're gonna do it as rental, then they're probably gonna consolidate the lots, and then, we would see it at that time when they come in for, with a plat that shows they're consolidating it to maybe to build it out. So, a lot of the things that we're talking about are gonna be caught at other stages, not necessarily here, because they're just gonna give us, this is a straight rezone, and therefore, the only time that anyone's gonna see it at Metro again is when they come back in for the building permit.
And that's my point, that I just really don't know. There are all these unknowns. If I had a person here, I could ask these questions, then, at least I would know from their point of view, what is there. I mean, here, they can do up to 21 units, assuming that they want to do 21, but maybe they want to do 20 or 19 or--
But if we, if the commission gives an approval or disapproval, but if the council then allows for the rezoning, you still won't know whether they're gonna do 20 or 21 units or 19, because then, they'll have the entitlements because it's a straight rezone, not an SP, and they'll be able to do regardless of what they may tell you.
Yeah. I'm honestly not arguing, not questioning what the document says. I'm just-- I have a hard time with not being able to hear from the applicant. That's what I'm saying. But I hear this is, this is a commission, it's not the council, so we have different rules, so I understand.
But it is extraordinarily unusual for the applicant not to be here. Yes, or to have at least spoken to the commission in some way.
Any other questions, Councilman? Commissioner Sims?
I just adamantly do not like this. When you go back to the circle, we have totally-- I understand the Trinity Lane. I certainly understand the major corridor of Dickerson Road, and-- but we have basically done huge zoning changes or through SPs, this whole neighborhood. And one of the fundamental principles of our job as commissioners is to make sure that we strive to give citizens, including those who lack formal organizational influence, full, clear, and accurate information on planning issues, and the opportunity to have a meaningful role in the development of these. And I know for a fact, this neighborhood has not had that. And I think if we're gonna change the neighborhood this substantially, one parcel at a time, the other thing I think is our job is to make sure that we pay attention to the interrelatedness of decisions and the long range of consequences. So, one SP at a time looks fine, but when you start asking, Ms. Davis, you've asked for this for months, the aggregate, I think it's a very different picture. So, I have just some real concerns about moving forward on this without talking to the councilperson or to the applicant.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Well, initially, I was pretty much for it, actually. I guess it's good to listen. You know, in print, generally speaking, maybe in isolation, maybe I feel like it is consistent with policy. I'd still be pretty, you know, comfortable to still go with staff recommendation for it. Just, it is a major, you know, arterial, I guess, Trinity Lane, and even with the maximum, I think it's appropriate for that, where it is. But, you know, the recent comments does make me at least pause. Normally, these things are pretty thought out by the councilman, you know, and only when we do hear from him, at least we get his take on it. So, that is a little unusual, but, okay, I'm rambling. But I think pretty much I would still agree with staff recommendation on it.
That's true.
So, I'm kind of-- well, two things. One, I just, I guess I like a specific plan better because then I at least know what's coming. I don't really like the idea that-- and I mean, kind of to your point just a moment ago, I mean, what does, if a-- technically, this could trigger our affordable housing requirements, except for we don't have an applicant, that we can-- how, I mean, that's just, I guess, a general question. Like, how do we handle upzoning when it's the councilman who's doing it? How do we pass on that requirement?
Well, it's gonna happen at the time they come in to get the building permit.
It would.
Could be the U.S. Office of-- but really, the building permit--
But what triggers it at that point?
At that point, it's when you're, it's, I guess, declared at that point, or, if you're gonna do condos, let's say at that point, if they were going to develop this property for condominiums, then they're most likely going to consolidate these lots, and then, they're gonna do a horizontal property regime, so which will carve off the different units. And it's, at that point, it's clear that that's a probably, that's a forced sale product.
Right, right.
As opposed to the consolidating, they're doing multifamily, and it's all still one lot.
But that would be considered an increase in development rights that would trigger that?
Well, not with the zoning--
Because the zoning would already be in place.
Yes. It's the rezoning that triggers the inclusionary housing ordinance.
Right.
And so, if they meet the provisions of the ordinance when they come in for permits, the Director of Housing will be tracked on those permits, and they would work with her if financial incentives are available.
So, even though the rezoning will have already occurred before there's a private party--
Yes.
--responsible for this?
Yes.
Okay. That was just a technical side. That wasn't really necessarily my whole-- I mean, I guess I am, I understand the, and this is maybe just a broader philosophical question, but it's like, I totally understand the need for more density and that we want to create the corridors because that's gonna drive improvements and bring transit. But at what point do we say, is it a chicken, you know, what comes first? Like, at what point have we got so much development going on that we can't, you know, the infrastructure just can't keep up? Like, when do we say, okay, we know this is gonna be a corridor, and we've got all this new development coming, we've got to get ahead of some of the infrastructure concerns? And I don't know, that's not really our job, but I do think it's a really relevant question.
Well, that's what the traffic impact studies are for.
Yeah.
When they, when they do come in to do the development, and then, Public Works reviews those. But to that point, this is a few hundred feet from--
190.
--an interchange onto Ellington Parkway.
Right.
If you don't put density between Gallatin Road and Dickerson Road, right next to Ellington Parkway where there's an interchange, where do you put it?
No. I mean, I agree completely that this is a good place for it. I just wish that we had, you know, something else going on at the same time to say, hey, we know what the East Trinity Lane infrastructure improvements are gonna look like, so that, to her concern, that we see that there's an investment coming, that we're not waiting eight years of gridlock with all of this development going on.
Councilman Bednay fills your paint with Knowlesville Road and the growth that he's seen in his area. And it works itself up, again, as density grows, it puts more pressure on the infrastructure we have and raises these types of projects in the priority list.
But, is that how?
It's the chicken or the egg. I mean, if you don't add growth, then it's hard to fix the infrastructure. But when you tell somebody that lives next to it, oh, you have to take a, make a sacrifice so we can have enough density, so we can build infrastructure. They'll say, why do I need to suffer this? But it's the only way, I think, in the circumstances we have now, unless we increase taxes and create a bigger fund to fix the infrastructure before we go through development, it's kind of the way, the way things are. I honestly, I understand this is close to intersection. It's a good, and it appears to be a good rezoning. I just have a hard time that I cannot ask the-- I think I'd like to make a motion to defer, to give the applicant a time to come and give their point of view.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. And do you want to defer indefinitely or one meeting?
Well, so, doesn't that also bring up our normal question of where is this? Has the bill been filed, and how soon do we have to rehear it in order to--
We can, we, there's not a council bill, so it can be deferred.
Okay.
Do you want to--
I think one meeting is, should be plenty. I hope that they'll be able to come to the next meeting.
Well, so, the motion is to defer one meeting? Is there a second for that?
Just to confirm, that would be November 9th? Isn't there a lot on the agenda November 9th if we're deferring on our choice?
Would you like to defer two meetings? Because we have a lot going on that.
Yeah. Or maybe we can do an indefinite, and then, they can bring it back whenever they're ready.
Generally, we, for council members, we courtesy who's two--
Okay, well, two meetings then.
Okay. So, the motion is for two meetings. Is there--
I just want to note that because there's only one meeting in November, that would be the first December meeting.
Yes. Well, hold on a second. Wait. Commissioner Sims, hold on one second. We're in the middle of a motion. Okay. We'll get to that in a second. So, there's a motion to defer two meetings. Second. Now, we're on to more discussion. Commissioner Sims?
I'm learning.
Some of the questions that I think Ms. Davis is raising on behalf of her neighborhood, and I've heard lots of other people ask, how will we get those answered, or we'll be back at the same thing, maybe with somebody here to help answer those. But looking at the entire neighborhood, because I think any one of the decisions we've made alone were probably the right decision. It's only when we put those decisions in a broader context.
Well, now, I will tell you, generally, there's a lot of leeway for a council member who is elected by the people to, I mean, when I was a council member, you know, you judge and, you know, what you do. So, there's some leeway to that. And then, I think that's a question you can ask the council member.
Okay.
When he comes back and he's here to ask him a question. But that is a very good question for the council members. And generally, council members, I don't want to speak for the current council member, but they have a pulse on the neighborhood generally. They get all the calls generally. Now, there's arguments both ways. I, it's political, so, you know, some people agree, some people don't. So, but, on the motion for us to defer, I think it gives him the ability to answer our questions for a two-meeting deferral. Don't you think so, Mr. Simms?
I do think so. If I could speak real quickly to Commissioner Simms' point, it's the policy. The policy makes, makes that decision about where density is supposed to occur. And so, when you see a lot of growth, growth happening in a particular area, and you look at the policy for that area, and it is neighborhood-evolving, and it's near a corridor, and it's along, I mean, this is, that you see a lot of growth occurring in a particular area, that the policy says that's where that growth is supposed to occur, is actually some confirmation that your policy is correct. If you started seeing a lot of requests to amend policy in a neighborhood maintenance area, or you started to see a lot of applications that are getting approved for increased density in a maintenance area, that would be something to be alarmed by, because then, your policy is not actually building out the way that you, as a community, have said you wanted to do it. And so, these policies, through the community meetings in Nashville Next, identify the areas where this community told us that they wanted the growth to go. And so, I mean, I think that's the check on it. Is it within the policy areas that imagined that growth happening?
And I think some of this has to do with how far from the proximity of your major corridors are you willing to push that growth. So, there are a lot of, I just, and part of it is, I just don't know how to think about these in the absence of more information.
Yeah. Well, that's why we have the deferral. So, there's proper motion for two-meeting deferral, very good discussion, and we usually have these discussions at our retreat. have these discussions at our retreat every year about growth, and we'll continue to do those things. And we, you know, we bring in speakers, and the planning department talks to us about those issues. So, two-meeting deferral, there was second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the two-meeting deferral, say aye. Pose no. Ayes have it, defer two meetings. We are on to... So, we're on item 25, which was originally on the consent, and I want to see if anyone is here. I see some folks in the back room. Oh, not on. So, is anyone here in opposing item 25? All right. Would the commissioners like to put that back on the consent agenda, since we, I don't see anyone in opposition here? Well, hold on.
Just one note. We did get a letter, but we had a letter from someone asking for it not to be on the consent, and they couldn't be here, but they're not here, so that's, I don't know what, that wasn't the reason why we pulled the consent, though.
What was the reason?
Do we, do you mind know why we pulled it?
No, we generally, assuming that it has a recommendation for approval from the department, and assuming now the commissioners have asked for something to be removed from consent, and no one shows up to the meeting, then those are the ones that we leave on consent. And we did have somebody come in and ask for it to be pulled, but now, they're not here anymore.
So, in other words, there would not be an argument here, you know, we wouldn't have anybody speak, so, and the staff felt comfortable enough to put this on the consent agenda. So, is there a motion to put it back on the consent? Has been a motion to put it on consent agenda? A second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Pose no. Ayes have it. That's, item 25 is now back on the consent agenda. So, we are now on to, I think that completes, does that complete our, the regular things? Okay. So, we are on other business, historic. Commissioner Tibbs? Parks, our parks representative's not here. Anything, Doug, on parks? No update?
No.
I do not attend those meetings.
We don't have an executive committee update, do we, Vice President? Okay.
Are we going to do a workshop at Sunswite this...
I'm glad you brought that up.
Okay.
We were just getting to that.
We're in sync tonight.
All right.
So, we have a new commissioner, we're about to have another new commissioner, and so, we thought that we should do a workshop soon, and maybe even do one relatively soon. I know Bob was working on a timeframe. You got a timeframe, Bob?
He's working on it.
Yes.
He's working on it.
That doesn't look like he has a timeframe. He did not fire off a date right then, but we...
November 9th.
I'm not sure that's the workshop, but we're going to put something together soon, and then, we thought, just after a couple of months, then, we would do it again, because we think that, we do have a lot of questions, and we do have a lot of new members, and so, it'd be worthwhile not waiting for the annual retreat, but doing something soon. Glad you asked. Bob, when is the annual retreat?
We definitely haven't planned the annual retreat yet, but we'll work on some dates and send it to y'all for both the workshops and the annual retreat. We generally, on the annual retreat, we like to get the mayor there, so we have to work around the mayor's schedule. It's usually on a weekend, and so, we have to be pretty flexible on that. And, yeah, we, no. Anything going on in, at the Metro Council? Just a few big projects?
We're one big happy family.
Huh. I'm just joking. We appreciate all that y'all do, and there's a lot of big projects coming up, if you don't know that. But, all right. That completes our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
What about your director's report?
Oh, the director's report. He already, he'd already, it was on the, anything else, Doug, that you would like to talk about?
Maybe the commissioner would like to adjourn.
First of all, thank you guys so much for everything, the pizza, the cookies, the gavel that I'm taking with me. No, it's been a really great experience, I have to say. I'm, and I don't think there's that many people that would think this was going to be a great experience. It took a lot of my hours of my time. My child turns two on Saturday. She was six weeks old when we started this thing, so she's only known me gone every other Thursday night, so I plan to go out with my girlfriends and not tell anybody. No, but we, it's been great. No one really understands and knows, until you've been here, the hard work and dedication of the commissioners, of the staff, the director. We are very blessed in the city of Nashville to have you guys, and you don't get the credit you deserve, nor the money, but there's nothing to do about that, except to put a word in, and really, you are appreciated. And you will still see me, probably over there, at the next meeting.
That's where we saw you before you said, "Over here." We saw you out there.
So, we are adjourned.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.